First item on the agenda, adoption.
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
Tom, motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom seconds the motion. Any questions on the agenda? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, motion carried. All right, next item, approval of the May 8th minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve the May 8th minutes.
Second. Rob is, and Fred seconds. Any changes to the May 8th minutes? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, motion carried. Next, authorization to pay bills. Mr. Foshee.
Mr. Morick, I move to you, authorization to pay bills in the amount of $1,094,398.22.
Okay. Rob seconds. Any questions or discussion on the bills? All right, if not, please cast your ballots. Okay, all voting yes. All right, next, public comment. First, I'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop of 59, Jackie Spurle. If you would come up, say a little bit about the troop and introduce them.
Hi, my name is Jackie Spillman. I am here with Boy Scout Troop 59 of New London. I'm here with Tyler Kaprin, Vincent Kletkow, and Caleb Tickler. We are here, we are working on a merit badge, citizen in the community.
Very good, thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Spillman. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to make a comment tonight? Yes, come on up.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Wilson. I'm running for sheriff of Wapaka County. A little history on me, I'm 24-year veteran from Wapaka County. I currently am a patrol sergeant for the last 12 years. My duties include all our training. I am the training coordinator as well as the trainer. I'm also in charge of Stoneville Patrol, ATV Patrol, and as of recently, Water Patrol. Want to speak a little bit about my platform. School safety, as we know, is the most important thing in the United States right now. Currently, our department has a walkthrough program. We also have a program where the officers will stop off at events, check out while on duty, also meet with the teachers and administrators monthly. What I propose we do is never close the book and say we're all done with school safety. We spend a lot of time locking these kids inside to keep them safe, but we never talk about what we're going to do when the kids come out. Those doors swing open, these people that want to destruct aren't just going to go home. We need to think about what we're going to do. They may be waiting in the school buses, and that's the perfect spot. They can take out as many kids as they want. They know they're not going to come out of their lives, so it doesn't matter to them. So what we need to do is work on the outside things. School buses, events, we need to really pay close attention. We need to be proactive as much as we can, never reactive, and like I said, ongoing, never close the book. I know, I applaud New London PD for what they have developed over the last month, I believe. They've created two positions for part-time officers to fill the other schools, keep the one officer in the main school. That's something I also propose for the county. It's something that we can work with all the departments, come up with the perfect programs for school safety, also work with them and help provide or find part-time officers to work in these schools. We have a lot of county schools that right now are not, they do not have school resource officers. Also, I want to talk about workplace violence. We never talk about, what about the bullies in the workplace? We've got a lot of them, we've got drug use. How do, how does personnel deal with that? How do the employees deal with supervisors? We need to react. Focus with the administration there on problem employees and potential problem employees, and how they pose a threat to their business. We need to know how they can anonymously report, how they should immediate report, or have them constant monitoring through the safety of the whole business. Also, personal and home safety, I guess I'd like to say, if elected sheriff, I'd like to have two meetings throughout the year in three different spots, New London, Manawa, and Wapaka. Talk, have our staff here, have one from patrol, one from corrections, one from our communications center, talk about what we're doing, what we're going to do, and what we're spending our money on. We need to show transparency to everybody in the county. They need to see who we are as well. Also, that's going to let you, as citizens, tell us your concerns. And we can, we can talk about the concerns, you can get information, you can go away well-informed. I think that's an important part of being a sheriff in Wapaka County. Drug use. We all know drug, heroin is a huge problem in Wapaka County. Currently, we have two drug officers working tirelessly, sometimes 20 hours in a shift, come back after four, just to finish reports. They're trying to stop drug use and drug dealing. The problem is, can we really arrest our way through this? I think we can sure make an impact, but we also need to talk about prevention. That starts at the schools, the teachers, the parents, and the students as well. Right now, we have a drug court, which I talked to the drug court coordinator. It's a 14-month program. So far, it's working well with the nine people that are enrolled. A couple of them have faltered, but they're not going to unenroll them. They keep them in, and they continue the monitoring twice a week. I believe they have to do a urine test for drugs. But what's going to be the big thing about this is when they're done, the nine people that are currently in it, they're going to be testament to how well this works to other drug addictions or drug users as well. Budget. What we need to do with the budget for the sheriff's department is have a better process to ensure an effective and efficient budget. We need to stop unnecessary spending, spend money on our needs and not our wants. If there's something that we really need today, that's perfect, but if we want it, we can wait till the next budget. And I say, a need would only be something that is paramount to the community or the officer's safety. I guess that's about it. I'd like to thank everyone for listening to me, and have a great night. And also, August 14th is the voting date for the primary.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Sergeant.
Any questions at all, or don't we take questions?
Any questions for Sergeant? Guess not? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Maureen Halsin, representing Ellers Associate Incorporated, to inform us about the sale bonds.
Do I need to, can you hear me? Okay, great, I'm on, okay. Great, thank you for that introduction. When you sell bonds, especially to issues, you're, we're going to be using lots of paper here, so you've got two packets that we're going to review with the results of your sale, as well as very long resolutions too, that you'll, that are on your agenda for consideration tonight. So, the first item that we wanted to, or just some background here, I think it's been about two years, I think I was here for your bond sales in 2016. I worked with Phil Cosson at Ellers on the New London team. He was here last month to discuss the borrowing for the general obligation issue, and then the sewer water and electric utility issue. Those resolutions were authorized with move forward with the sale. The sale was held this morning at 10:30 for both issues. We're going to start by talking about the general obligation debt issue and those results today, and then we'll walk through the utility issue. And then the resolutions, we'll all answer any questions, and then the resolutions will be for your consideration tonight. So, for the, it's identified as the 2018A issue. This is the general obligation corporate purpose bond, and the amount of $3,080,000. This is, just a refresher, this is to finance your street improvement projects, Division Street, and then your pool improvement projects. At 10:30 this morning, we received four bids. The winning bid was DA Davison out of Denver, Colorado, with a true interest cost of 3.4123%. That came in just about half a percent under what we had estimated last month. You know, excuse me, that, actually, this one came in about 13 basis points, or just about 1/10 of 1% less than, the interest rate was a little bit less. I got my results confused between the utility and the GO issue. The GO had a much more reduction in the interest rate that was shown. This came in about, about 1/10 of 1% less than was shown last month. The other important numbers are included on that page after the cover, the summary of the results. We're going to look at those in some exhibits later in the report. And the next page that I wanted to look at, it's going to start on page two through four. These are going to be the results of today's sale. So the winning bidder, DA Davison, is, there's also syndicates here, Northland Securities and Hilliard Lions, that are going to be placing your bond, along with DA Davison and Partnership, placing your bonds in the secondary market. You have their true interest rate that they offered on the far right, the 3.4123%, and then the interest rates that they've offered over that 20-year period of time. The other three bids are included on page three and four, if you want to take a look and see what else was offered. On page five, in our sale day report, is the rating, or I'm sorry, the rating report by Moody's Investor Services. As the city in the past, we've had your issues rated by Moody's, and similarly, this issue was rated, and the, Moody's affirmed the city's rating at an A1. Just wanted to provide a little, in my conversation with Phil, he wanted me to provide a little bit of feedback to the city about that result. The, he had a discussion with the rating agent, who let Phil know that there was significant discussion at the rating committee level, when they were discussing all the details about the city. There's, you know, a panel discussion that happens at Moody's before they release a rating. And they mentioned that they wanted to let Phil know that the city was on track for a potential upgrade in the future. They don't include an outlook on, on your, on this report, but you have had positive improvement in certain factors related to your tax base growth, since you last visited with them two years ago, some of your wealth and socioeconomic numbers, and then increase in your liquidity, significant increase in your liquidity and fund balance. But there, you, some of the factors that they list here on page six, they talk about some credit strength, some challenges, and then items that could lead to an upgrade or a downgrade, is that they, you, they mentioned that you have a higher, a higher debt burden, a higher debt burden, and still socioeconomic numbers that are a little bit lower, maybe than some of the other communities that are within that upgrade category. But as I mentioned before, they talked about your, your strong growth in your fund balance, that you've had strong growth in your tax base, and to continue those, those area of growth, and maybe if you have additional growth in your wealth indices, you might, you may be in a position, when you go for a rating, I think that you're planning on issuing debt in about three years again, that if you can show a strong trend in those areas, that there could be potential for an upgrade as well. Okay, so that's going to go through, so the rating report gives a lot of great information on the city, that I would encourage you to read. With the last two pages, I wanted to go through are page 10 and 11, with the results of today's sale. Page 10 is our sizing worksheet, and we have both the utility issue and the GO issue. So if you could pay attention to the first column, which states 2018 GO issue, and then the column highlighted in yellow. We have today's final sale results compared to Phil's preliminary numbers that he went through last month. The borrowing size remained the same at the $3,080,000 amount, but the winning bid from DA Davison included a premium bid, which I think we've had in the past, and with, that was about $123,000. With that premium bid, there were, we did two things. One, we were able to make a deposit to your project fund of about $48,000, so that will help with any contingencies for your Division Street or pool upgrade project, or any other projects related to those, those purposes. If you have another street project that you wanted to be able to use those funds for, you would have that much, about $50,000 available to use for your projects. You also are going to have a deposit to the debt service fund of about $75,000. On the next page, page 11, we are going to look at the tax impact of this, of today's final sale results, and we'll also, I'll point out where that deposit to the debt service fund is going to. So on the left, we have your, this is a similar worksheet to what you saw last month. We have your existing debt payments, and then in the middle, under the blue column, are today's final sale results. That $75,000 we've shown to be applied toward your interest payments in year 2018 and 2019. And then, also on this impact worksheet, we've, we've used a placeholder for a 2021 financing for $6 million. So together, we have that, the impact, the debt service levy and debt service rate impact of the new borrowing, in addition to that borrowing three years from now, what that would look like. And so, in 20, what we show here in 2018 is that there will be an, an increase in the levy and the rate, and then a inclining, or increase as you move forward, and the height of that is to occur right around 2021 and 2022, in the first few years of that new $6 million issue. So, just want to be able to provide you a holistic picture of not only what your plan, what the results of today's sale are, but what, what this will look like over the next three-year period of time. On the bottom of the page, we have today's sale results compared to the pre-sale estimates last month. The interest rates were, or the total interest cost came in a little bit higher than what was reviewed last month, about $17,000 more, but with that premium bid and the deposit, there was about $50,000 additional for your projects, and about $75,000 available that you don't need to levy, that will be applied to your interest payments. Overall, you came in about $31,000 better than what you approved last month. So, there's a resolution tonight to approve the sale of these general obligation bonds in the amount of $3,080,000. The other sale results that we want to look at is the other packet that I provided, or was handed out to you today. This sale was for, this is a utility revenue bond issue, in the amount of $3,400,000 in sewer, water, electric system, mortgage revenue bonds. First page after the cover is a summary of today's results. This is, just a refresher, this is for, the purpose of this finance is to pay for your well project. We took the bid similar to the other sale. At 10:30 this morning, there were four interested bidders. The winning bidder was Bernardi Securities out of Chicago, Illinois, with a true interest rate of 3.5342%. Now, this is the issue that had about, I would say, just under half a percent less than what we had seen last month. So, very nice savings in the interest rate. Then all the important numbers are included on this page. We'll look again at the exhibits. Page two through four are today's sale results. We have the interest rates that Bernardi offered over 20 years in the middle of the page, and then their true interest rate at the 3.5342%. On page five, we have a rating report, so similar to the city's rating report. We went through the, we went through the rating process here. Moody's affirmed the utility at an A3 rating, which is just what, the last, the last time you went out to borrow, the same rating. So just for comparison purposes, the city's at an A1, in that single A rating category by Moody's. The utility is two notches down, so there's your A1, there's an A2, and then utility's at A3, which is what we normally see with comparing a city's rating to a utility. So that, that's in line with what we've seen in the past for you. So, page 11, sizing worksheet, similar to what we just saw for the GO issue. We have your revenue issue on the far right. Now, in comparing today's sale results, that column is actually not in yellow, as it should be, but you just, it's the far right column compared to the preliminary estimates. This issue also received a premium bid, similar to the GO issue. What we did though with that, it, premium bid was, we reduced the borrowing size by There were some issuance costs that came in a little bit less than estimated, but mostly that was, the downsizing was related to the premium. The next page, page 12, is our, I would say, the debt service impact to the utility. So on the left, we have the system projected revenues, and then your existing debt payments, and then in the yellow column are today's final results. On the bottom of the page, you can see how these compare to what was authorized last month. With that reduction in the borrowing size of 45,000, and the significant reduction in the interest rate, together, you were able to, you came about, you came out about $200,000 better than what was authorized last month. About $200,000 less in total borrowing costs for the utility. And what we were able to do is, with that reduction in the borrowing size, we took some principal payments off of those first five years, knocked those down a little bit, so your coverage ratio is pretty mu, is pretty similar over the next five years, and only improves as you're paying off more and more debt. Again, we have a resolution for approval, or for consideration tonight, in the amount of $3,400,000 in sewer, water, and electric system mortgage revenue bonds. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions for Maureen?
I guess, maybe, A5.
Of the utility issue or the GO?
Sorry, GO.
GO, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, the rating report?
You know, it was under, like, loss of a big, big customer, that, what do you do about that?
So I just want to make sure, are we talking about the GO issue or the utility issue, or loss of a big customer?
I got the utility.
Utility, okay. And that was one item, I put a note here, I forgot to mention, is that...
I'm far ahead of you?
No, you're, you're right in line. I'm glad you brought it up, because I wanted to mention it. So they, they did not indicate that there was necessary, for the utility issue, that there was, you were necessarily going to be considered for an upgrade compared to how, the discussion that was had for the city's GO issue. And I think the main reason that that, or one of the items that they've mentioned here, I think to your point, is that you have a larger, you have more of a concentrated...
Big area.
What was that?
Is it a big area too, right? The city, a lot of people involved.
Yeah, it's a more concentrated user base. So if you had more diversity or growth in your user base, that may be, that would potentially put you in a position to have more upward pressure on your rating, or upward movement, I should say.
Okay, any other questions?
Roasting in industrial parks definitely would help.
What was that?
Roasting in industrial parks?
Yeah, yep, exactly. More users, more utility users, larger sized users, exactly. Those type in varying industries too, would help too.
It isn't just about taxes, it's about users here.
Correct. So for the utility one, I think, you know, maybe to your point, were you reading off one of the items that said it could lead to a downgrade? So, a loss of a major utility user. So, the rating agency is assessing the risk of the utility making these debt service payments over the next 20 years. And so, when you have a more concentrated user base, in the event, especially if it's, you know, specific to a certain industry, any loss of that user would significantly impact the utility, and would put pressure on your, the ability to make those debt service payments, or keep the coverage ratio that you're required to keep on this issue. So that, that's a risk factor, and that's something that they mentioned, and that, and I think, you can underst, hopefully you can understand why that would...
That could cause some rate changes?
Tom, the best example would be you lost the poodle cheese, and your sewer rates had to go up to cover the loss, because if we lose, 69% of our system is large customer, and it's basically Kerwood and Hillshire Tyson now. If you lose one of those, it's a huge impact on the revenue stream to the utility. So there is always that risk when you get rated and evaluated by bondholders, that you could lose a large customer and have a financial burden.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now we need a motion to approve a resolution awarding the sale of $3,080,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds to DA Davison.
So moved.
Now, Laurie, Rob seconds. Any further questions or discussion? Not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion is carried. And we also need a motion to approve the sale awarding of $3,440,000 sewage, water, and electric system mortgage revenue bond, Series 2018B, of the city of New London, to Bernardi Securities. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Ron makes the motions in a second. Fred seconds it. Any further questions or discussions on that?
The number's 3.44. The preliminary number was 3.44, and the final's 3.4.
Correct. Did you make that? I guess that's what I heard. Is that not what?
Right.
Okay. Oh, the agenda. Got it.
3.445.
That's correct.
Understood.
Again, what, yep, be safe. The agenda had $3,445,000. What we are approving is $3,440,000.
$3,400,000.
$400,000.
$3,400,000.
Yeah.
$3,400,000. Okay.
We save $45,000.
Save $45,000, oh, $3,400,000. Okay, thank you. Glad we got that straight. All right, any further questions, discussion? Not, please cast your ballots. All voting yes, motion's been carried. All voting yes, motion's been carried. All right, thank you, Marie.
Great, thank you. We appreciate the ability to, or the opportunity to work with the city and the utility on this issue.
All right. Next, we move on to standing special committees. Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington?
Board of Public Works, got on 6418. First item was wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Mr. Gruhl briefly updated the committee on his monthly treatment plant report. The next item was review of bid tab and recommend award of a construction contract for improvements to sanitary sewer lift station number two. Mr. Gruhl and Tony Cappel presented the bid tabs for reconstruction of lift station number two. There was a total of three bids ranging from a base bid of $399,000 to $488,000. Mr. Gruhl and Mr. Hirth recommended moving forward with the project and award the contract to the low bidder, PTS Contractors Incorporated, in the amount of $339,000 plus a $5,900 alternate bid to include stainless steel piping in the project. That'll be brought to committee tonight. The next item is review of the wastewater treatment plant 2017 compliance maintenance annual report and consider for action a resolution approving report. Mr. Gruhl reviewed the report, which is required by state code, and committed that the plant received an A on the report. The council will need to pass the resolution that was made and seconded. That'll be brought to the council tonight. The next item, approve professional services agreement to hire McMahon and Associates for improvements on the railroad crossings at High Street and Industrial Loop Road. Mr. Hirth explained that a discussion with the CN representative regarding the improvements to railroad crossings at High and Industrial Loop Road was, provided the permit applications on for, on CN's property, Canadian National.
Thank you, Marie.
The cost estimate for the project is estimated at $118,562 with a contingency cost of 10% and proposing to use wheel tax monies to finance the project. Mr. Hirth is recommending hire McMahon to create design and bid specification for the project, fill out CN applications, and bid out the project. Motion made and seconded, bring that to council tonight. It'll cost us $15,000. The next item was award a contract to Huffman Cemetery Services Limited Liability Doing Business of Stony Cemetery Services for 2018 grass and vegetation cutting services. Mr. Hirth shared the department received several lawn grass weed complaints in the last few weeks and notices have been sent out to property owners regarding these complaints. Proposals were requested for grass and vegetation cutting services. One proposal was received from Huffman Cemetery Services. This is the same contractor who's awarded the contract last year, kept the rates the same, $38 an hour. Mr. Hirth is recommending the award of the 2018 contract to Huffman Cemetery Limited Liability Doing Business of Stony Cemetery. This is a motion made and seconded. This will be brought to council tonight. The next item was a director's memo. Mr. Hirth reported on other projects that are already in progress or beginning soon. Garrett Giffens from the wastewater treatment plant completed four years of service on May 30th. Next. Other matters in next week's agenda, none. I make a motion to accept an ordinance to, I don't mind. I make a motion to accept the contract from PTS contracts in amount of $404,900 for improvements to the sanitary lift station number two.
Okay.
Second.
There's a second. Lori, second?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded toward the contract of PTS Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $404,900 for improvements to sanitary sewer lift station number two. Any questions on that?
Is that paid out of the sewer funds?
Yes, I think so, right?
Is that how it's paid?
Yes, we believe so.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
I make a motion to accept the resolution accepting wastewater treatment plant 2017 compliance maintenance annual report.
Second. Dennis seconds it. Any further questions? Motion's been made, again, toward a resolution accepting the WTP, WWTP 2017 compliance maintenance annual report. Any further questions? Not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
I make a motion to hire McMahon and Associates to design improvements for bid to the railroad crossings at High Street. And that should be industrial park two, isn't it?
Industrial.
Nope, just the one, okay. High Street in the amount of $7,500.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Rob seconds. Game motion's been made to hire McMahon and Associates to design improvements for the bid to the railroad crossing at High Street for an amount of not to exceed $7,500. Any questions or discussions on that? John?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have a question at this point, but I'm not part of that committee. Does the railroad pitch in anything for that? I mean, it's their tracks.
We tried.
Yeah.
We got them on the first one, that was at Beacon Avenue, they helped us with.
And we're working with them. We would probably have to do the outside, but they will be responsible for the middle section. So, we have to go through this application process with them to go on the next step.
Okay.
Design it, go through this process.
Just curious if they should, you know?
Well, yeah, you'd think they would.
Any other-
Question, timetable on that?
So- Um, design can start up in the next month or so. Application with the Canadian National and their permitting process, a longer times, you know, it takes for them to go through the process, so, and then put it out to bid.
Good.
Yeah, time to tell.
Any other questions? Tom?
Is that coming from wheel tax money, some of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that the complete quite a bit of the wheel tax money, or?
No.
No, no, we were projecting-
We won't know until we get the bids in.
There was an estimate cost in your packet, in the public works packet, for the project itself. Was it $110,000 for both of them? I don't have the number.
$118,5 something.
Is that what it was?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at here.
So, that's the estimate for McMahon with the project.
I'll leave that, look at portion.
Out of the 180, and then House Road is the other one we're kind of looking at with those funds as well.
On House Road, is there any sharing possible with the council there?
Yes, we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
Okay, I make a motion to hire McMahon and Associates to design improvements for bid on railroad crossing at Industrial Loop Road in the amount not to exceed $7,500.
Second. The second was Ron. Okay, thank you. Any questions, again, on to hire McMahon and Associates to design improvements for bid to the railroad crossing at Industrial Loop for an amount not to exceed $7,500?
Was that just a proposal, not even a bid, maybe, at that price?
This is for them to design improvement for bid.
Okay, that, yeah, okay. My fault.
Any other questions? Not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
I make a motion to award Huffman Cemetery Services LLC a contract for 2018 grass and vegetation cutting services at the rate of $38 per hour.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded toward Huffman Cemetery Services, the contract for grass and vegetation cutting at a rate of $38 per hour. Any questions on that? If not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried.
And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Mike. Next, moving on to finance and personnel. Mr. Fachee?
Thank you, Mr. Morak. A very short meeting on Wednesday, June 6, 2018, at 4:30 PM. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Morak, and the agenda was approved. Next, there was a motion made by Mr. Barrington and seconded by Mr. O'Connell to recommend the council approval of the annual license list with the deletion of items 66 or 69. It was one item that was entered twice, and the motion carried unanimously. The list is attached to everyone's packet tonight. Next, the finance directors' reports were reviewed and the city's administrative reports was discussed. And then, the July Finance and Personnel Committee meeting will be held a day early due to the Fourth of July holiday, so please make a note of that. That being Tuesday, July 3 at 4:30 PM. There being no public comment or further business, a motion was made by Mrs. Dean and seconded by Barrington to adjourn, carried 5:00. The committee adjourned at 4:56 PM, probably one of our shorter meetings of the year.
That's true.
And that's all we have from finance. And I recommend, or I make a motion to approve the yearly license list and amended list.
Sure.
Oh, we do have an ordinance.
Take the ordinance first.
This is an ordinance that we went through a month earlier, and that's why I didn't have it quite on my radar here. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend Section 9.42, Joint Municipal Court for the City of New London and the City of Waigah. And Jackie explained a month ago to the committee that this was a law change and some housekeeping stuff internally that we need to do to, now, if somebody's interested in running for municipal judge, they will need to go through Jackie, the county, through that instead of-
The filing officer who they turn in their nomination papers to would be the county clerk.
Okay. Motion's been made, sir, a second?
So-
Fred seconds it.
Should I withdraw what I originally, I was, I skipped the judge ordinance and I went, I made a motion to approve the yearly license.
I think I'll, yeah, withdraw my second.
He can withdraw the motion. Yeah, so, we're, we're voting on the second reading of an ordinance we voted on a month ago. And so, the ordinance to amend Section 9.42 regarding filing officer for municipal judge. That, that is my motion.
All right. And there was a second. Any questions on that ordinance? Not, please cast your vote. All voting yes, motion carried. And now, John?
Now, the anticipated yearly license list. I make a motion to approve the yearly license list and amended list, as is.
Second.
Motion been made. John, seconded by Mike. Any questions, discussion on the yearly license list? If not, please cast your vote. All voting yes. And, okay, thank you, John. Next, moving on to Parks and Recreation. Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Parks and Recreation Committee met on June 5 with the adjournment. There was no public comment, and so, we proceeded, taking up consideration for action on an ordinance for mending Section 9.17 Sub 7E pier and dock, docking regulations. Chad explained this action is a simple housekeeping item to include the new St. John's Dock in the municipal code to regulate and enforce the amount of time, voters, and more at the docks. It was suggested to reword the verbiage as follows. Transient mooring is allowed on all public docks and piers for a collective total of 48 hours in a seven day period, except there is no overnight mooring allowed on any of the docks in the middle or western bays of the Riverside Boat Launch Facility nor the launching area on the eastern bay at that facility. And there was very little discussion on that, and a motion was made and seconded. And it carried, and that item is on tonight's agenda. And then, there was a review of the tennis courts evaluation report. Chad presented a rather involved evaluation report detailing the conditions of the city's tennis courts. Chad will review the report with the school district as they use the courts for their tennis program, and will evaluate how to move forward with maintenance and/or replacement. Committee, under director's report, there was no questions on the monthly reports or stats. And the following employees are recognized for their anniversaries. Mike Bachman for seven years, Ted Christian for his three years, Steve Thompson completed two years, Gordon Gabrielson has completed four years, Don Reinert has been with us for five years, and Jim Thorpe all of 16 years. There was no chairman's report or committee member report. And then, next month's agenda items will be possibly discussing the award of contract for tree planting along Division Street. After that, the committee proceeded to recess and proceed on down to New London Aquatics Fitness Center. And there was a motion made, and the committee did adjourn at that point, recess. And then, the committee subsequently reconvened, meeting at the New London Aquatics and Fitness Center. A motion was made and carried that we re-adjourn. And Chad proceeded to take us on a very interesting tour of the aquatics and fitness center that I have to say was, it was eye opening. The wholesale change of that place is just wonderful. It's kind of literally entered into the 21st century. And we could tell from the, just the way things smelled from the pool, the atmosphere and everything. It's a wholesale change. It's quite an improvement. I encourage the citizens to at least go down there, try the pool and so forth. It's totally different. Well done. And then, the committee subsequently adjourned at 6:45 PM. And there is an item on tonight's agenda. I would motion for waiving of rules to approve an ordinance, the subsequent ordinance in one reading.
Okay, motion was made. Sir, a second? Ron, you second it?
Yeah, second.
Ron seconded. Motion was made to waive the rules to approve an ordinance in one reading and seconded. Is there any questions on waiving the rules? If not, please cast your vote. All voting yes.
I'd like to, motion for an ordinance to amend Section 9.1, no, I have the wrong line here. Okay, here we go. Adopt an ordinance to amend municipal code Section 9.17 Sub 7E to regulate the amount of time transient mooring is allowed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Lori, second it. Motion was made, seconded, to amend the municipal code Section 9.17 subsection 7E to regulate the amount of time transient mooring is allowed. Any questions on that?
What, what's the time, I'm, remember that at night or anything? What, what's the time when, remember that at night or anything?
Forty-eight hours.
You've been parked there for forty-eight hours in a seven-day period.
Contiguous.
Not, don't worry about it. Daily thing.
Forty-eight hours total in a seven-day period. So if someone comes up and stays overnight in New London, that allows them to do that.
Any other questions? Not? Please cast your vote. All voting yes. Motion carried. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Morak. Thank you, Mr. Roy. Next, Planning Commission, Mr. Steinhorst.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning Commission met on May 24. Meeting was called to order by May 18. I was in Washington DC at the time, so I had to miss that particular meeting. The agenda was adopted. First, the minutes of the April 26, 2018, meeting were approved. First of all, we had a resolution to officially name Starlight Drive. Resolution to officially name Starlight Drive was presented by the Planning Commission initially. This street was in the City of New London and the Town of Mukwes jurisdiction and had been known as Starlight, L-I-T-E, or Starlight, L-I-G-H-T, Drive or Court. The City of New London now has complete jurisdiction of this road, and to eliminate any confusion, a recommendation to officially name the street Starlight Drive is being made. Motion was made and seconded to officially adopt that naming. Carried 6-0. Secondly, we had a site plan review from Midstate Asphalt for two mini storage buildings. Midstate Asphalt submitted a site plan to construct two mini storage buildings on a parcel of land located between McHenry Street and Avon Street. One of the proposed buildings will be 190 by 50, and the other will be 100 feet by 24 feet. The property is zoned M manufacturing and would allow this type of use. Motion was made and seconded to approve the site plan as presented. Next, we had a request for a garage to exceed 1,100 square feet and 15 feet in height. Forest and Kirakatki of 512 East Hancock Street submitted a request for an alteration slash addition to the existing detached garage. The existing garage is 864 square feet. The proposal is to remove 288 square feet and add an additional 720 square feet, which will total 1,296 square feet. That's 196 square feet over the 1,100 square feet allowed by the zoning ordinance. The addition is also proposed to be 16 feet in height, which exceeds the 15-foot maximum height. Motion was made and seconded to approve that request. Carried 6-0. Next, we had a request for rezoning from NR Natural Resources to B2 Highway Commercial for Dollar General. Request to rezone a parcel of land from NR Natural Resources to B2 Highway Commercial for a new Dollar General store was presented. The adjoining parcel, Bucky's Restaurant, is zoned NR-B2. Senator Goller suggested that this rezoning should be consistent with the adjoining parcel. Motion was made and seconded to rezone the parcel NR/B2. Motion carried 6-0. Next was a proposal of annexation of property from the Town of Liberty. Mr. Hanlon presented a site plan for a proposed annexation from the Town of Liberty to the City of New London. The owner would like to construct a new home and have access to city sewer and water. Two lots are proposed to be annexed with a combined total area of just over .8 acres. In addition, property to connect a future street from East Ridge to Glory Road, this is currently undeveloped land owned by Marv Schneider, will be included. The balance of the 10.5-acre parcel would remain in the Town of Liberty. The owner of the property wants to use the remaining land for agricultural purposes. The discussion that followed questioned whether or not city zoning would allow an agricultural use. Mr. Hanlon stated it would, but did not know exactly what would be permitted. It was the consensus of the members that the property should be annexed in whole if the zoning would allow the agricultural use. As such, no action was taken. Mr. Hanlon updated the members on several projects that were ongoing or upcoming, and our next meeting will be on June 28, and we adjourned at 5:33 PM. I would move then for the resolution to officially name Starlight Drive for the City of New London.
Sir, a second? Fred seconds it. Motion was made and seconded to officially name the street Starlight Drive. Any questions?
Has that whole area been annexed now?
Not completely.
Not, not all of it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Not? Please cast your vote. All voting yes. Motion carried.
And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Next, we have economic development. Is it Mr. O'Connell?
I will be reading the minutes from Tuesday, May 29, 2018. Meeting was 4:00 PM. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Morak, actually at 4:30, and the adoption of the agenda was approved. Bill Zeiner from the Firm Marketing Director updated the committee on that. Has been performed regarding the digital marketing effort. Bill distributed report on the number of impressions that six current videos are receiving Facebook and YouTube. With the time period April 18 through May 25, there's been over 63,000 impressions on Facebook and 41,000 on YouTube. It is very interesting to note that Hatton Park video has had over 41,000 impressions on Facebook. There's one, there's one more video to be prepared. It was the consensus of the group that the video will focus on new offering coming from Fox Valley Technical College titled "The Adult Education and Family Learning." The program will be held at Washington Center. Bill was thanked for his presentation. Tammy Van Evenholmen addressed the committee regarding the idea that she had to implement a committee bike rental option similar to what other communities have. After considerable discussion, it was agreed that providing a bike rental service for the city would be a valuable asset. It was suggested that the Chamber of Commerce would host a bike rental operation. April, at the Chamber, will work with Tammy to bring back a plan for implementation of the bike rental program for the further consideration at the June Economic Development Committee meeting. Kent informed the committee regarding Tuesday, May 22 meeting that he had with Randy Stadmuller, Ann Hunt, Kristen Cross, Bill Fleese, Virginia Slice, Dave Morak, and the mayor, and Rudy Rackey to talk about finances for the proposed mixed-use library. A determination still needs to be done, how much funding will take place with the library. We needed, we need to investigate if the city can lease a number of years and then buy it in the future. Randy is insistent that library is a kingpin to the development of property. We all agree that even with the bond debt limit for the city, there'll need to be a referendum. The sooner the better. We need to determine if the school district is going to have a referendum this November. It's difficult to talk to public about projects because there's so many different outones. Randy will be at the June meeting to update the committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right, moving on then to minutes and reports. You have minutes and reports from the Housing Authority, Library and Museum, Police and Fire Commission, Utility, Cemetery Superintendent, and Building Inspector. Any questions or comments on those? All right, if not, moving on to reports of officers. Council President, the mayor has appointed Joyce Hoffman to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The mayor also made several appointments that we need to approve. April Kapitsky to the Police and Fire Commission and Terry Murphy to the Housing Authority Committee. So I need a motion to approve those two appointments. And a motion was made by Fred, seconded by Tom. Any questions on those appointments? Not? All in favor? Let's see, roll call, I guess. Roll call, okay. Please cast your votes. All voting yes, and those appointments have been approved. All right, then, next, moving on to City Administrator, Mr. Hager.
Thank you. I only have just a couple of brief items. I think everybody's been real impressed with the docking and pier system that was recently put in on, excuse me, again, near the Pearl Street Bridge, and there's one last piece to it. I don't want anybody to misunderstand. There's a handicap ramp that gets put in there. It's not, right now there's some kind of steep stairs, but there's a full-length ramp to allow handicapped accessibility to those, and that was subcontracted by the main contractor to another construction company, and that ramp should be arriving here imminently, any, any day now, within, I would hope, within the next week. So you thought that the docking system and piers were great then, and it'll wait till we get the ramp that actually goes there. It'll make it a lot easier for people to walk down to, and likewise, I believe, for handicapped accessibility as well. Along that same line, we have a contract out for repairs to start on the river wall, and I'm not sure, Chad, if that's coming up real soon. It won't be long, and you're gonna, the hardest part of working on the river wall was done already, and that's where the boat ramp is. That, that was the only section that's actually completely torn out and replaced. But the balance of the wall, all the way from the bridge here, Shawnee Street, down to Pearl Street, is gonna receive kind of a facelift. There's gonna be a lot of work done to it to rebar. There's concrete spalling and so forth, so that project's not done, and it'll be starting pretty soon, and I think everything's gonna look great when it's done.
Very good.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Kent.
What about the high water?
Now, they're gonna wait until it hopefully comes down. There's some riprap involved, but, yeah, it should, it should be coming down.
All right, next, City Attorney, Mr. Waters.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, but I have nothing specific to report to the council unless they have any questions.
Any questions? All right, if not, moving on to Utility Manager, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. The Division Street Road Project, as far as the water side of it is going, they should finish the water work all tomorrow. And we had planned to do some minor repairs and ended up with some soil conditions, putting in 2,300 feet of water main in that project, made it quite a bit larger. But at this point, we have three tie-ins left and one water service on the segment from Beacon Avenue to Oak Street, so that should be wrapping up tomorrow. That's a good, good thing to have done. Last Saturday, we had our recycling event, and we collected 59,274 pounds of electronics that will not go to landfill, but will, will be recycled. And of that, 540 televisions weighing 33,279 pounds were part of that process. And we had four wooden console TVs and about 11 Big Plasma projection TVs. They still come out of the woodwork, so it's amazing. This was the sixth event that the utility's done for recycling, and we, we are not planning to do it in 2019. The cost of that to the utility is $21,291 for that service to the city. So the people that came were very appreciative, and it's a very good project for the utility. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Very true. Really appreciate that. All right, next, Director of Public Services, Mr. Hirth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Obviously, this is probably our busiest time of year, starting off on our recreational side. Our department has started a lot of our recreational programs this week. Just a reminder that our weekly Camp Hatton series is available yet, and you can sign up for any week by the preceding Wednesday. We also have a Bay Beach bus trip on Wednesday, June 20. I see there are some spots available for this trip, so if you're interested, you can sign up online or contact us in the office, and we can help you with that. Regular users probably know, but if, if you're a light user to the Aquatics Fitness Center, like Rob said, it's once again open. The new mechanical systems are operational. Contractors are still tweaking things and getting the bugs out, but I can tell you, like Rob said, the water, at least in my opinion, definitely looks cleaner. And I've had several unsolicited comments that, you know, the wa, the air seems less chlorinated. I mean, it seems like a better environment to, air environment. So that was definitely some of the goals that we were trying to accomplish in this upgrade, and I think we've definitely seen the first, the leg of that, of those goals being successful, so I'm pretty happy about that. In regards to our parks and facilities, some of you may or may not know, but we have a project to extend the west and center boat launch ramps at Riverside Boat Launch. That construction is anticipated to begin on July 9. We will have at least one ramp open for people to still use, so the entire boat launch won't be closed off. You can still use it. But just be warned if you're a user of the boat launch. The west and the center ramp are going to be extended, and this is gonna help us so that we don't have, in low-water situations, the situation where people are going back and be able to drop off the edge of the boat launch ramp. So that should be a definitely big improvement there. If you recall, The Shadows on the Wolf financed a project to install a new fishing platform in a kayak slash canoe access point on the Embarrassed River, which was just off a river road on, off of Highway 54, and this is on River Road just north of the Dog Park. It appears that project is done. I've sent a message, left a message with the contact, my rep with The Shadows on the Wolf, just to verify that it's done. I haven't heard anything back from them, but I know people have been using it. It's pretty cool. It's a nice cantilever platform that goes over the Embarrassed River, allows people to access the river there and the kayak long. So, once I hear back from them that it's officially done, then we'll probably get the word out more, and I probably want to take some photo opportunities with The Shadows to thank them for their, for their contribution to our park system. But definitely go check it out. It's pretty cool. Kent actually stole my thunder in a couple ones, but just to add on the, the new river wall dock, that, once that ramp is installed, that will be an ADA-accessible ramp, so someone with a mobility challenge will be able to access that ramp. And then, in regards to the river wall project itself, I do have a pre-construction meeting on Thursday, so at that point in time, I'll have a better timeline of the river wall project, the rehab, and then what the necessary, the needs are for any access or alley closings that we may have to go through during that project. So I, we'll have some, hopefully some more information after our pre-construction meeting on Thursday. Steve Thompson talked about Division Street a little bit. On, on our side, sanitary sewer main has been installed from Beacon to Oak. They are working on installing the storm sewer main. This afternoon, they were at the intersection of Evergreen and Division, and I think they're gonna be pretty close in finishing up installing the storm sewer main at Oak Street. That's our ending point, hopefully tomorrow. Then they're, we are also done, I believe, with all the sanitary laterals that are along that stretch from Beacon to Oak, so the sanitary laterals are all done as well. The contractor will have to go back at Beacon and then start hooking up the, the catch basins from the storm sewer catch basins, those laterals into the storm sewer main. So they're gonna go back and start installing all those from Beacon and working their way south as well. And then, if you're, if you live on the street, you probably saw that Wapaka County is working on the south side of Division from Oak to Beckett. They've been ripping out curb and gutter, and then the concrete contractor is starting to do that spot repair and starting to put sidewalk in on that side. So things are definitely proceeding with the Division Street project. But if you have any questions on Division Street, definitely check out the Public Works page on the city's webpage. I've been putting all the updates on that page. And then, once we get closer to the downtown river wall project and the boat launch project, I'll probably create pages on the website as well, just to kind of keep people up in the loop for things. And there's a really good feature on there. If you want to just submit your email address, every time I post an update, you get an email saying that there's been an update, so you don't have to go back and check, you know, every day to see if I posted anything, but that's been a really good communication piece during the project. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Next, Chief of Police, Chief Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. Just wanted to remind everyone that on Tuesday, August 7, we'll be National Night Out here in New London. We're gonna be doing it between the city hall here and the police department, so come on down and visit us that night. And I also want to just talk briefly. As technology changes, you're gonna start seeing the way you get alerted for weather, for crisis, and situations like that. And in Wapaka County, we have what's called Code Red in Otunami County. It's the ad hoc system. If you go online, you can either get access through our webpage, or the county's webpage, or the sheriff's department's webpage, and you can sign or the Sheriff's Department's webpage, and you can sign up for this. It takes about two minutes to do, and you can get weather alerts. If, for example, we have a situation going on that we need to get a message out to the citizens of New London, we can get that out to you very quick. You can receive the messages by text messages, by phone calls, by emails, so there's a bunch of different ways to be able to do it nowadays, and I would highly encourage everyone to try to get hooked up to that, and if you don't know how, talk to a friend, a relative, and they might be able to help you. And I will try to make sure that we repost those sites on our Facebook page, and also make sure we have both of them on our webpage here, coming up soon. And then finally, with the schools being out and stuff, I have noticed that there's a lot more bikers around, there's a lot more walkers and stuff like that, so I just want you to be aware of the crosswalks and stuff, make sure you stop for people crossing on the crosswalk, and that's about it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. Next, Fire Chief, Chief Wolfher.
Thank you, Mr. Morak. I just have one item tonight. The Fire Department and I would like to thank the Shamrock Club for their generous donation of $10,000 payable over two years for the UTV that we plan on purchasing, so thanks to everybody at Shamrock Club and everybody who supports the Shamrock Club. That's all I have.
Very good. Okay, thanks, Mark. All right, see, Jackie, did you have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight? Any other comments? Tom, most, Steve?
We had a customer came down to the utility, and they got a phone call asking them to send $350, go to Walgreens and send a $350 payment to them, otherwise your lights will be turned off. As it turned out, the customer did come down to the utility and asked what was going on, and we said, "We don't do that type of business at the utility," and we were able to talk the customer into not mailing the cards. Actually, they can't, we took the cash out, put it into the utility account, and we'll be refunding that back to the customer, but we did get a call from a scammer who said, "The loan utility says taking my money." And we said, "We know you're a scammer," and that was the end of the conversation. It's out there. Someone called us and says, "Go to Walmart or to Walgreens and get a payment card and send it to me, for the utility wants to turn your lights off." That is not how we do business, that is a scam. Please be aware of that.
Very good. And on to that real question.
Since we're talking about scamming and stuff like that, we receive calls on an everyday basis now at the Police Department, and I just want to remind people, as what Mr. Thompson said, is no one in government will ever take a payment through a gift card. If that, they're asking you to get gift cards and go and send them somewhere, it's not legitimate. If you didn't buy something, or you didn't win the lottery, if you didn't play the lottery, you can't win the lottery. We're seeing scams dealing with that, they're calling people, saying that their child or their nephew or whoever was locked up in jail down in Florida, and they need to send money, and they need to send it within the next 24 hours. That's a scam. All this stuff is a scam. If you ever have questions, please call the Police Department, we will talk to you. No one from the IRS will ever come to your house and throw you in jail if you don't pay money within so many hours, so please give us a call. We will confirm that it's a scam, and kind of go from there, but it's, it's just one of those things, we're seeing people on a regular basis losing $10,000-plus dollars right here in New London.
Wow. Very good. All right, thanks, Jeff. Any questions on those? Any other comments? All right, Tom, you made a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Fred, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned. Thank you.[1189.33]